I'd like to call the Apache Junction City Council meeting to order. The invocation will be led by Tess and the prayer will be by the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of being gathered here today to do the city's business on behalf of our constituents. We ask that each of us be guided by you, Father, in decisions we make that affect others and not by any personal agenda or ego. We ask to be humble in our disagreements and that we never forget we are here to serve the people of this beautiful community. Father, we ask for your protection for all of our first responders, those serving in our military, and all of their family members. We ask that they may be brought home safely each and every day. Lord, we also ask for special healing and protection for the officer involved in a situation today. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Present.
Councilmember Biggs?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Gremmell?
Here.
Councilmember Nessar?
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor?
Thank you. As a reminder, all items under the consent agenda will be approved with one motion. If a council member wishes to remove an item for further discussion, the request will be made out prior to approving the consent agenda and will be moved into new business. Do I have a motion for a consent agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Set.
Roll call.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Okay, I have no awards and presentations to do, so announcement of current events from the council. Reagan?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I just wanted to start, so on Saturday was the Star Family Event held at Post 7968 in conjunction with both of our VFWs, 7968 and VFW Post 9399. Just wanted to extend from both auxiliaries and the Planning Committee thanks to Mayor Wilson, Councilmember Evans, and Councilmember Gremmell for attending. It was a great event. We actually gave out 26 banners at the event, and you can see those on both sides. And there's still four more to be delivered to families this week for all of our gold, silver, blue, or white Star Families in and around the Apache Junction area. So just wanted to give thanks on behalf of that. And then, just a reminder, the upcoming April's first Friday and Saturday is actually April 2nd and April 3rd, so the first weekend. It's all Easter themed and everything as well, so it'll be a great event. And the raffle, the 50-50 raffle, will be benefiting the Paws &amp; Claws, so please come out and support that event. And then, the last one, many of you I hope saw, 3TV did a story on the new hitching post in front of Hatfield Medical, which kind of sparked something last week with myself and Superstition Horsemen's on really seeing where all of the hitching posts are in and around town and really promoting the ability that you can ride your horse right up to the doctor's office, you can go to restaurants and bars in town, you can go to fries and pick up groceries, lots of different opportunities. So there's just a quick, I think, 20 seconds of the clip that we're showing. Oh, and the city building, you can ride your horse up to the city building, too. We even have, yeah, yeah.
Horse stall.
Horse stall, two of them, I believe, yeah.
He's number two, the least under my wife. He's almost like my kid. I mean, I talk to him like he's a human.
You may have seen that man's partner in crime around Apache Junction. He's tall, dark, very handsome, and he goes everywhere with him, even to doctors' appointments. Brittany Thomason met the surprising guest you'd never expect to see while waiting for a checkup.
The Wild West days are long over, but in Apache Junction, in the middle of traffic and restaurants, Jim Leslie's ride to the doctor comes with four legs, a little horsepower, and a lot of sass.
Thank you. He's commanding, he don't like to be left alone, he's rambunctious, he's frisky.
And yet Jim can't pass up the opportunity to saddle up for appointments.
I'd rather ride a horse than get in my truck. He's therapeutic.
When Hatfield Medical Group opened a doctor's office in Apache Junction last summer, PA Daniel Ramos says they gave patients the opportunity to ride their horses there.
Horseback riders like Jim tie their horses to this hitching post, then their animals wait for them here while they're in their appointments.
Horse riding can reduce anxiety for the patients, it can reduce stress, it can increase their muscle tone and muscle strength, so anything that we can do to have our patients be more active, we're all for it.
The hitching rail is a simple addition to the office, but a game changer for horse lovers who like to spend time with their animals.
Anytime he gets out, he loves it.
A win for Jim, his horse, and their health. Brittany Thomason, Arizona's family.
I'd just like to thank everyone at Road Haven for their COVID shot, two-day extravaganza. They had the Johnson &amp; Johnson shots, I understand there are more of those one-shot shots coming to Pinell County. Many of us, I see, that we were there, received them without any side effects, which is the best part of any shot. I'd just like to thank them for taking the time and making that effort because it was well-received.
I just wanted to, Councilmember Biggs, that news article, I thought was very well done, it was nice to see those stories here for Apache Junction.
Yep, it was nice to see a positive story. I'd like to share with the community an event that's going on this Friday at the Table of Grace Church, 555 West Apache Trail. We've got, this past year, with so many events that are being canceled, it's nice to have events that are still happening. They're having a mystery dinner, mystery dinner theater, and so it's gonna be really neat, it's free, donations are accepted, doors open at 5:00 PM, dinner will be served at 6:00 PM. This will be the traditional St. Patrick's Day dinner, corned beef and cabbage, and so it's open to the public. I think it's gonna be a lot of fun. The people, the attendants and the audience get to figure out who killed Romeo. So it'll be a lot of fun if you can come.
Where's that question?
This will be Table of Grace Church, 555 West Apache Trail, this Friday at 6:00 PM. Doors open at 5:00. There'll be a silent auction there also.
Okay, well, you got my pictures for this Friday and Saturday. If you ever remember, the city of Apache Junction had a, I want to say, a horse that was found in our community, walking around, so we call her Gypsy, just because the aspect that she was exploring, trying to figure out where to go. We tried to get the, find the owner, we even contacted the Department of Agriculture and we were unsuccessful, and the Department of Agriculture let us go ahead, yes, as a city, go ahead and make arrangements to have her adopted out. And we had a veterinarian come out, give her basically a clean bill of health, then we had, she had some long feet, so we had a farrier come and work on her feet. It's one of the things that they can't do, a one step when they're too long, it has to be done in a couple of steps. And so we waited until the second time, and she's very sound, she's, I'm gonna say, lovable in the aspect on it, she likes the attention, she'll show you affection. And we even had Daryl Cross going out and try her out, riding her, and she responded very well. And so this Friday, from 2:00 to 6:00, we're gonna have her on display at the rodeo grounds. Come on out, take a look at her. Come back on Saturday, from 10:00 to 2:00 is when we're gonna do the silent auction on her, and the winner will be adopting her. We are looking for a good home for her, and she's about 14 years of age, and she's doing very well, and as you can see from the pictures, she's very, very well-kept, and she's even, you know, we've been brushing her and spending some time with her, so she's gonna be missed by my wife very shortly. So, anyway, please come out and take a look. Yes, oh yes, and of course, this one picture here is when she was, we first got her, if you noticed, her hood's in the front, were kinda long, but we got that all taken care of. And now, I also attended the Road Haven, I'll say COVID Johnson &amp; Johnson shot, and yes, I don't have any pain, I work fine, and it was very, I'm gonna say, minor in the aspects for me, extremely minor. In fact, I don't think I even know that I had it even the next day. So it's, I encourage to keep track of it, it was, I know that Walgreens periodically will be possibly getting some, it depends on the county and how they can distribute it. But, you know, one of the places you can go is to Walgreens and see if they've got, I'll say, shipment in and when they're gonna be doing appointments. Oh, yes, that's right, I forgot about that one. Thank you, yes. Of course, this Saturday, at Pinell County Fairgrounds, is the Pinell County Junior Livestock Auction. And of course, this, I think it was Friday, is when they're gonna be doing it, and they're both at the Pinell County Fairgrounds, which is at the 11 Mile Corner. We, these are, we have some 4H individuals, you know, live in our community, and they're, they've invited us to come down and, you know, see their animals. And of course, the young lady down here says that her lamb loves to be hugged, and she's putting him up for sale, so you'll see that as well, and how they, how the, I'll say, the tearful separation. But we get attached to them very quickly, and this has helped supporting the 4H group in our local community as well, as well as all in Pinell County. City Managers Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bryant Powell, City Manager, just want to do a couple reminders here, our annual scrub and grub is coming up on April 1st, it's a celebration of this facility, the Multi-Gen Recreation Center, as a facility that we love so much as employees, and once a year we have a chance to dedicate a day to cleaning and helping remove and clean up our area, our workplace, that can help out our janitorial staff. In addition, we'd like to invite each of you to our employee lunch that day behind the Multi-Gen Recreation Center, anytime between 11:00 and 1:00. So come and get some grub. Love to see you on that day. Also, we work in conjunction with one of our local service organizations, our Rotary Club, and they are going to be doing a Clean Out Your Closet and Cupboards collection event. And the date is April 2nd, and it'll be here collecting, there'll be a table out in the City Hall parking lot, and we'd love to invite you to our community to come and participate on this event. I'd also like to, just a couple updates on the vaccinations, Pinell County is, Health Department's working very closely with a couple of organizations, Horizon Health and Wellness, and we recently heard Amory Women's Health Clinic, the one that's been doing all the testing, it's getting, they have been approved both to be able to administer the vaccines, which is a big process. Now they're getting closer as the vaccines come in, more and more, that you all are hearing more and more about, well, they'll be able to start administering those in our community. So hopefully, more and more folks will be able to learn about that and if they're so inclined, can participate.
Bryant, are those free of charge?
Yes, all of those will be, there may be some questions about insurance cards if there, if that comes up, but my understanding is all of these are intended to be that way. Love to know if anything is not that way. And then, Vice Mayor, I want to say thank you. Thank you for your invocation and reaching out, and to all our mayor and council for the concern you have for our police officer. Earlier this afternoon, one of our own was shot and has been hospitalized. The incident occurred this afternoon on the Apache Trail, just west of Signal Butte. Officers, our officers were pursuing a stolen vehicle, stopped the vehicle, and then there was an exchange of gunfire. The condition of the officer's not known at this time, and the suspect is in custody, and the situation remains under investigation, and I ask at this point that we do our very best in providing all the love and support we can to him and his family. I was just there at the hospital before our meetings, and the, our officer's stable, but so far we just keep hoping for more, more good news. Just wanted to update everybody on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bryant.
Okay, discussion and consideration for Resolution Number 20-44, a resolution proposed for extinguishing of a federal patented easement on 18th Avenue from Wagon Wheel Road to Goldfield Road. Rachel.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the City Council, Raquel Schatz with the Public Works Department, here to discuss again the roadway easement extinguishment for a federal patent easement on 18th Avenue between Wagon Wheel and Goldfield Road. So to follow up with some of the questions that the city attorney had when I was here two weeks ago, we do have an excessive process, in which we do have a meeting internally for pre-application to see if this is an easement that, that at least Public Works would see if that was something feasible internally, to see if this is something that could possibly go, go ahead and extinguish, make sure that the parcels aren't gonna be landlocked and doing so. Once we see that that's okay, we then reach back out to the applicant, we give them an application, and then they do their due diligence in returning all those items that we do request from them as part of the application. So as part of the application submittal, we do have an application form that they do have to sign and get notarized. They do need to have a support, the support petition does need to be signed by all the abutting property owners. They do need to provide proof of property ownership, which includes a deed, assessor records, and stuff like that, even a title report. We do ask for a limited realty guarantee, written statement as to why they want to have the extinguishment done. Proposition 207 forms, these need to be notarized, and these are a diminution of property that they sign over, a waiver that's stating that the city will not be liable if any, if their property, if their property is diminished in any way because of the exchange of the property. We do ask them to provide a drawing and a sketch, and then, then of course, the non-refundable $350 application fee, that we do say many, many times that there is a fee, so, you know, do you wish to proceed? And until I get all those things in order, that's only when I'm able to proceed with our actual process. So as part of all that information that we, that we gather from them, included that we do check to see those limited realty guarantees, and in there, the buyer, during the closing part of the process, they pay for, they pay for this, and in that document, it did not state anything that there was any structures inside that was being encroachment into the federal patent easement. A lot of the times, they don't say that. So I mean, it's, yes, it is a buyer beware, however, in this case, there was nothing mentioned in the title report stating that there was a structure inside of the federal patent easement. So also, so once, after we accept their application, we then submit to the utility companies a sketch, and we do ask the utility providers as well as the emergency responders for their, if they have any objections to the city extinguishing the roadway easements on these properties. So I do send these out, and I do ask for a two-week turnaround notice. This time it took us three, three tries to get everybody's responses from that. So what you see is in green is everybody said okay, and the red was they weren't in support of it. We do also, we also make sure with the utility providers that when we do send out these notices, we also do tell them that this is only for roadway purposes, and that we are in acknowledgement that all utility easements are to be, remain in place, and that is up to the applicant to go to each utility company to get their utility easement extinguished as a separate So once we get all the okays from the utility companies, that's when we start making up, we start gathering up the documents that we provide to you guys and the council. It's a little easier if it's a federal patent easement, because the staff can provide those documents, we can make up those documents. If it's a vacation, which is the dark green on some of the GIS stuff, it's considered a dedicated right-of-way. That stuff, we, has to be purchased, and that one, that one does require a registered surveyor exhibit, so that one, that process does take a little bit longer. So when we do tell people, you know, it could take anywhere between three to six months, this is also to take into consideration that there are some stuff that, that, it's out of the city's hands, and we do have to rely on sources outside to provide us these documents. So the question in property that we're here to talk about again, here I provided a one-mile section here to show you where our, where the extinguishment is, so that is bounded by Broadway Avenue, Southern Avenue, Tomahawk Road, and Goldfield Road. So the blue, and you see the light blues, those are just the half-mile, quarter sections, too. Bring it down a little bit more, here's the half-mile square, actually, no, a quarter-mile, sorry. And here I just show, you can kinda see where the roadway alignments are, and this is bounded by 16th Avenue to the north, Southern Avenue to the south, and Cortez and Goldfield. And 18th Avenue, you can see there, circled in the yellow. So I highlighted 18th Avenue, is that, that's an eighth of a mile in our, in the city. And on, to the east of Goldfield Road, that land is owned by the United States. Little closer in view here, it's 18th Avenue, part of our resolution here, 2044, between Wagon Wheel and Goldfield Road. So the reason again for this extinguishment is to allow a pre-existing shade structure to remain in the, in place along 18th Avenue, a structure that was not disclosed in the title report as being inside a federal patent easement. Destruction isn't impeding anything, code-compliant issues are not related to the structure. And we are here for your consideration tonight. We got it right this time. Any questions?
Thanks for coming.
Can you explain why the Development Services was not on board with it?
So, we've been working on this process for about a year and trying to figure out, because we do come up with all, we do get asked a lot of the times for all these extinguishment. I bring you back out here to this mile square, because you can see where the reds are, and you can see kinda where the greens are, and it's one of those where, okay, you know, they do see a need for trails in the future, that, that, you know, maybe not now, but maybe later on, that we don't, you know, we may want to have trails and such.
So even though all the other entities were on board with it, that the reason was for trails in the future?
Yeah, because if we did want to put something in there, then the city, and when I mean we, I mean the city, that the city shouldn't have to be buying back this property, which, if we wanted to put a trail in there, then we'd have to purchase property from them to say, hey, we would like this, this right-of-way, in many cases, a lot of people don't want to give up private property to do so.
Thank you.
So like I said, here's, I show here the road alignments here, where 18th Avenue, it's an eighth of a mile. And Goldfield, I mean, as fast as, you've probably already heard, a lot of people speeding through there, and it's dark and stuff like that, but eight, you know, it's an eighth mile on Goldfield, and we probably should, should consider limiting access on Goldfield the same way that we would limit access on Old West Highway, because those streets are pretty fast.
Mayor?
Yes.
So one of the things that I had noticed in your March, I believe it was the March 2nd memo, was that at that time Development Services was recommending denial, but in tonight's memo, there is no recommendation given. So I was questioning in that, but also in, in looking at who approved it and who did not, I'm kind of curious, from the Public Works perspective, as to what they're seeing that Development Services is not seeing in terms, because I don't see any road currently built going east to west, and do we foresee ever building one?
So part of the process that we started with, and I mentioned about a year ago, is we did, we did come to look at all these streets, specifically in the Y area, as to the areas in which doesn't seem feasible to build a road on Public Works' behalf. And that means that, you know, maybe there's, there's a wash crossing through there, you know, we would have to spend a lot of money to build a drainage structure so that we can build a road there, or if we didn't build a drainage structure, you know, it'd be a, one of the big dip roads there, that, you know, it's gonna be a blinding road, and, you know, possibly safety aspects of it and stuff like that. So there was an effort started in moving forward with this process, in which we started about a year ago, and then we peeled back a little bit, we said, whoa, 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 you know, let's maybe look at reducing maybe these extinguishments, you know, instead of the 66, you know, these quarter miles, maybe we can do, you know, 50 or even a 40 and stuff like that. And then that's when we started thinking, thinking again, and let's just, why do we want to get rid of them, you know, let's, you know, keep them in case we want to build trails for the future, and I think that was about the time that the city had approved of the active transportation plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So this particular easement, what is the width?
It's still 66 feet.
So if you're talking a trail, I mean, there'd be plenty of room in this easement if we didn't extinguish it to allow that building to stay in place and build a trail.
Yeah, so, so the applicant did say in his application was that, that it was, you know, that the reason for, that he'll remove it if there is going to be a future road being built, when the road gets built, then he will remove it. But in our current plan, I mean, there's, I mean, in order for us to build on it, I mean, we would have to, the Public Works would need to require to get right-of-way from all those other parcels in order to build a road on it, because essentially, an FPE is private property.
Mr. Mayor? Your Honor?
Yes.
I have a question. Is this, on this map, the second one that's in your, not that one, but the next one here, to the west of the property?
Uh-huh.
The dark green here on 18th, on the south side?
Yes.
That runs between Hilton and Baccaro? Has that already been extinguished? Is that why it's the dark green?
So, so the dark green means that it's dedicated right-of-way, and when that property was purchased, or split, or subdivided, there was a requirement at that time to do dedicated right-of-way. So that means that's right-of-way, that's owned by the city.
Okay, so that had, that dark green doesn't mean that's been extinguished?
Correct. Everything that you see in red is extinguished.
Okay.
And that's been given back to the, to the private property owner.
So other than this, this portion of, of the road of 18th, nothing else along between Goldfield and Star Road has been extinguished?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yes, sir. Go ahead.
Do you want to go?
Well, I, I just wanted to clarify, when Councilmember Schroeder asked Raquel about the easement width, isn't that 33 feet on each property? So for this particular case, it's just the 33 feet on?
Yes, the 33 feet on the north of the, of the roadway alignment center line and 33 on the south of it. So for a total of 66 feet.
And they're asking to, this case is extinguishing all 66 or just on their property?
Correct. So our typical method is to do the full 66 feet in a full block. Otherwise, you probably see stuff like half, you know, half or, or a portion of it. And we try to reduce having to do just little segments. I mean, this kind of seems like a segment as it is, but if you can imagine it being even smaller segments and pieced everywhere, it, yeah.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Raquel, can you bring up the Exhibit B map? You know, it looks like the parcel map.
From the, from the staff report?
Yeah.
I can, I can get to that. Let's see, would be in the memo or here?
No, in the combined.
Oh, the combined.
Yeah, page four. I think it is. There we go, okay. So when I looked at this, we have quite a bit of dedicated roadway around this.
Correct.
To the west, to the south, to the north. And I understand, you know, this was a real estate gone awry between two individuals and there's money spent on title reports, there's money spent on title insurance. And it is a buyer beware. Neither one of these items would show up unless you paid for a survey. So sometimes when it's easy going in, it's really tough coming out. Is a nice way to say it. So I understand it didn't show up, but it didn't show up because it didn't belong there. The things that show up on a title report are permanent structures. Neither one of these are. If you dedicate your roadway to the city, not only do we have a forever passage through there, your property taxes go down. And that's just a fact because it does take up property and it will be reduced. But I don't believe that it's this council's job to correct a real estate transaction that you're unhappy with. When we have all of these other roads, if, if we go ahead and did this, 18th Avenue from Becaro would no, never go to Goldfield. Whether we use it in this council's lifetime or in the next 20 or 40 years. We already have that, so why would we give this up? I understand it's an unfortunate occurrence, it costs money, but it's not our job to correct a bad real estate situation, it just isn't. If we didn't have all of the, these other roads already dedicated through here, eh, maybe we wouldn't need it, but we already have it. So I, I don't see any reason to give this up. I, I would love to make everybody happy, but in this job, you can't make everybody happy. And I, I just don't see us allowing this.
Mayor.
Yes.
I, I would just like to kind of extend a little bit further on what Councilman, or Councilwoman Evans had stated. You know, we always want to try to come up with a win-win situation, but we can't always do that. And I think the city has been, I think, too quick to give up these federally patented easements in the past. And I think we've reached a point in time where we're growing and expanding and we, we need to be able to look further into the future and say, hey, you know, we might need this land and we don't want to have to purchase it back. So I think unfortunately, we're at that time. And I know the City Council and the city's been working on trying to come up with some guidelines specifically to help with situations like this. So I, I think we will improve on that, but I think things have changed, unfortunately.
Understood.
Yes, Joel.
Mr. Mayor, the applicant gets to speak because they are, they have due process right and they paid their, their fee.
Yep. Anyone else want to say anything first?
Not right now.
Okay, applicant, would you like to discuss this with the City Council?
I think this is my third time. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and Council folks. And I understand the whole situation, you know. I mean, everyone here is, I think, reasonable and intelligent. And, and if I were in your position, I'd probably stick to it too and I wouldn't want to give something up. But why on earth isn't there some sort of compromise? This is not a structure that is permanent. If you didn't see it, you need to see it. It is some posts with some aluminum on it and it can be torn down rather rapidly. But we bought this thing and, by the way, we weren't the ones that got involved in the title report or anything. We simply bought it from an old guy that's from my hometown in Indiana, trusted him, and we bought it. It's that simple. And it's a small shade structure, it can be removed. My point is, and we just finished 90 hours of real estate schools, I'm trying to learn this stuff so I don't get burned again, so I'm getting tired of getting burned, is the bottom line is, there are things that you can do. There are compromises. Now, maybe you can't, I don't know. But if there is one, I think Raquel said it best, we're happy to do something to compromise and if the city needs it in the future, that's fine. I, you could build a trail there right now, I'll help you build it. There's plenty of room, even with the shade structure there. But if a road needed to go in, the shade structure would come down and I would be happy to do that. So it just seems that it's been there for 30 years and now it's a problem, you know? So let's get on with it, we need to get on with our life. As much as I like coming to your meetings, I like hearing the prayer. I was president of the Mesa Optimists and the Tri-City Association of Insurance Agents. So I've been around the block a few times, love your prayers, I love to pledge and I appreciate what you do. And give it your best shot, your best consideration, that's all I can ask. Thank you so much.
I have one more question.
Ms.
Your Honor, I have one more question, thank you. Raquel, or this is probably a question for Joel. You know, the gentleman has said every time he's been here that they're willing to compromise in the future if that's needed down the road. We're talking, you know, the comments were made 20, 40 years down the road, that's a long time. A compromise that this gentleman has offered, does that go in writing? Is that part of, is that, is there something that would go in writing that would say, you know, should this situation come up, I'm willing to?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Rizzi, as you know, there's, a resolution goes along with this. So yes, it would be in writing in the form of a resolution. So you could come up with reasonable, if you want to come up with conditions, you can add them to the resolution. Rather than make them here in the council meeting if they're, if they're, you know, if they're really easy, that's okay and we'd have, we'll retype it and then we'll get signed. But if it's more complicated than that, maybe it's something that you want to direct staff to go meet with the applicant and then come back with what he's willing to do. That's, that's another option, so it's not rushed in, you know, the time of a, a meeting. Because whenever you do these four amendments on a, on a document, it's not, it's not good to do that unless it's a very simple change of the resolution. So in other words, if you wanted to have some kind of compromise saying, well, he'll agree to move it if he has so many days notice, something like that, I'd rather see that in a different paragraph or in one of the resolution terms. And I would feel more, more comfortable bringing it back after we meet with them. And I'd be happy to meet with them and so would staff.
Yeah, or instead of the full 66, I mean, I'm sure they'd be okay with reducing that federal patent easement. So maybe it's instead of the 66, maybe they, they get, you know, you know, six or, you know, some, 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 something on both sides so that we can still, so that the city can still have like 40 of those 66 feet to remain for future.
Mayor.
I mean, we've done that in the past as well too. And this was, should have been a resolution between the applicant and Development Services when they had met. Unfortunately, it gets to a point where then it just gets sent to Public Works and this is our solution.
So two things, Senator Raquel. If we did a reduction in, like you just said, from 66 to, let's say, 40 or something along that line, I, I think the purpose isn't necessarily building a trail. It, it would be what would happen if we eventually need to put a road in there. So what is the smallest drop-down that we could go that a road could still be pushed through? It provided that happened, would need to happen, but, and you may not be able to, that may be at Public Works.
Well, no, we do, some of our, our engineering design standards, we do have roadways as small as 40 feet. We go 40, 50 and even 60 feet.
Okay.
Wide, wide in easement, so.
And then Joel, in regards to that potential compromise in the agreement that Vice Mayor Rizzi was talking about, would that be, would that go then with the property? So if the property owners decided to sell in a year or two and then this comes back again, does that move with the new owner? Does that only stay with them? How does that work?
Well, whatever you come up with, the resolution should be recorded and therefore it would run with the land. So if they sell it, it would run with the next owner and they would get the same rights. But I, I think if you're gonna, and I, maybe, maybe a meal is needed on this one. I'm not sure if this is a, it's not a sectioned line road, I don't think, is that correct? And so I don't know what's, what 18th Avenue would ever be. So that's a question for your department.
So that's one of my biggest questions, is are we talking about a road, Mike? Are we talking a trail here? What exactly is, so are we taking a 50-year discussion here or are we having a 10-year discussion? So Mike, could you please help me clarify on that? Because I, I think we need to understand that if the Public Works Department is asking for a road, then it's one thing, if it's not, then it's not.
Absolutely.
We kind of get down in a, excuse me, we kind of get down in a little triangle in this area. So I don't see this particular area being a road. At most, it would be a path or a horse trail or something like that, so.
But it could be a 33-foot road to Wagon Wheel.
And it's, the roads west of this area are, well, I guess I should say too is on Goldfield. You know, busy road, it's got some vision problems on it. So the amount of access points we have on it, we'd like to keep them limited. So I would see that.
Can you explain what that means?
The, so what you do is like on Ironwood, you have very few access points. Sorry, I'm not close to the microphone, I keep forgetting that.
Yeah, Matthew will say something here or I'll.
Matt will be mad at me. So, McNulty, sorry. And, but the access points, you want to keep them limited. You don't want too many times where you have intersections that are crossing on busy roads. So we'd like to keep that to more of a quarter-mile scenario. And may fall in this area, but the, just the triangular shape and the lack of traffic that would go here, it's, it's not that important to us, so.
So you don't foresee this becoming a road in the future?
I do not.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, if you are going to change, and I just consulted with Raquel, if you're going to change the, the amount of feet, we would have to change the property description in Exhibit A. Also, the map would have to be addressed and how that would look. And if you're going to do any kind of compromise, maybe you want to show what the current conditions are on the property and that would be in Exhibit, if you want to do that. If you cut it down though, I think we'd have to bring this back so that you could see the exhibits. Unless you're comfortable in saying, staff, just do it and you'll sign it tonight. But then the problem is, we don't have the language for you tonight.
Your Honor.
Yeah.
Or prove it as is. Your Honor.
I've got a quick question in the aspects on this is the, the structure that they're talking about, if we decrease the, the size of the easement, would that make it meet the setback requirements?
I'll have to look at that because.
Circle back.
The pictures that I have, it, it'll be very close. Without a survey, we won't be able to actually know if it is an act, if, if reducing it, like I said, to make it the 40 feet instead of the 66 feet, if that would help.
Mayor, and who, who would pay for that survey then? I mean, how is that determined?
That'd be the owner.
Huh?
The owner would pay for it, right?
Correct.
That'd be a condition that you might want to put on. It's up to you unless you want the city to pay for it. But surveys are going for what, $500 to $1,000 now?
Yeah, easily. I mean, a survey for the property, yeah.
So, Your Honor.
Yes.
So I think we tend to overcomplicate things.
Absolutely.
The, we don't extinguish the easement, the structure stays with no repercussions. If we build a road, he takes it down. If we got to get it in writing, we get it in writing. I think it should be that, cut and dry, for real.
Your Honor.
Yes.
So with the idea of having something recorded and depending on how long that would stay, I mean, it would stay forever as part of the title report, but the cargo container itself is a movable, non-seried item. There's no serial number. We have no picture of.
What cargo container?
The cargo container that you're talking about is on Wagon Wheel and it's not inside this easement that they want to extinguish.
It's not on that side, okay.
Correct.
So the structure that's been built without a permit.
Which has not been said from code compliance that it's, that it's illegal, that it's not an illegal structure. The only thing that's wrong with it is that it's inside of the federal patent easement. So as far as Public Works knows, code compliance has not issued, issued it as an illegal structure.
Okay, so. With that, we don't have a code case, but we know that it wasn't permitted. Is that correct?
I'm, I'm not sure about that.
And I guess that, that's one of my questions too, is how did all of this come about? I, I still fuzzy on, was this started by the property owner, was this started by the city?
My understanding, the applicant was interested in having an extinguishment. That's correct.
Because?
Because.
Why?
Why?
Someone must have approached them.
That's correct.
Yeah, because of code compliance on the other, on the other problems on the, on the property, not because of the structure though.
So there's more problems on the property.
Correct, which is different.
And we know if permits have been pulled for all of the other work that's been done.
And it could have been grandfathered in. There's a lot of stuff that we don't know that's been grandfathered in as well too. There's a lot of stuff that I don't, that I'm trying to figure out and I don't know.
But those other things don't have anything to do with this.
Right.
Correct.
So why complicate it?
We don't know.
But we do know. We have the reports, we have the, we have the information, but we do know. There was, there were other issues that brought the attention to code compliance and that's how this came about. There's not going to be a road built. I mean, we just, we do this, we seem to do this all the time where we just want to complicate things and look for any minute little thing to say no. Let's show a little bit of grace to this person.
I, I don't think it's not, it's not about not showing grace. It's showing, it's thinking about our city years from now and giving something up, whether we've got plans to do anything with it. That's not the point. If we're going to have a regulation, we have already all of these dedicated roads. Just because we don't know, that doesn't mean 50 years from now. I'm not trying to be the big mani here.
No, no, Your Honor, Your Honor.
No, I'm not.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think we should extinguish it, but I mean, just let it, let it ride. Right, let, keep it, keep it the way it is. So the city keeps a hold of it for something that may happen in 50 years, but at the same time, the building's been there for 30 years, I mean, for crying out loud. There it sits, there it will sit. If for some reason, a road's coming through, we'll take it down. Simple.
Your Honor, over the years, we, if not, from a staff perspective, you have two staff perspectives here going on. One, from a Public Works Department and your.
prospectus here going on, one from a Public Works Department and your Development Services. One takes a fifty-year approach, one maybe ten years. We need to bring forward the public policy piece that will become your roadmap that you can lean on to be the map to how you want to approach these. And, you know, apologize for bringing this one forward, or the applicant brought it forward. You have this before you. We're trying to do our best to keep you up.
I, I disagree that the applicant brought it forward. I think the applicant was forced to bring it forward due to other code compliance issues, which in and of itself is, is an issue, but then they've now had to spend three hundred and fifty dollars, am I correct, to, to bring this forward. I agree with, with Robert. I mean, at this point, we're not doing anything with it. We haven't done anything with it for twenty years. It didn't show up when they bought the property, when they bought it. Move on. We can, i- i- if they're willing to compromise with us, let's have that in writing. Let's end that discussion. I don't see why they need to tear down a structure if they don't, if we're not using it at this point.
Anyone else?
I go, I'm gonna back up what Robert and Brayden just said.
Okay, now, we have a choice here. Do we make a motion for this, or do, do we turn around and say, "Let's give direction to staff to work with the owner and come up with a, an agreement"? I'm asking.
That still requires a motion.
Well, that's, that's a, that's a policy decision. Sorry about that. That's not a legal question. So it's up to you whether you want to go that way. Or you can call for a motion and just see what is moved.
All right.
Okay, Mayor, I'm sorry. I gotta step in here one more time. So, I just want to have it clear in my own mind. So the property to the west, right? Which would be to the right on, on this photo, well, my right, your left, on this photo, is currently federal land, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
All the light green is federal.
Okay, so, and we know positively for sure that we would never, ever build a road that would go through on Eighteenth Avenue through that federal land.
Correct. There's, there's washes that do go through that whole, that, through that Eighteenth Avenue, that would make it impossible for, for a roadway to go in there unless we actually spend city, city money on there to, to put drainage crossings through there.
Can I clarify something?
Yes.
When you say federal land, you mean it's a federally patented easement?
Sorry, it's federal patent easement, in which if the city does not use that federal patent easement as a roadway, it's still considered private property.
It's, it's underlying property is private, however, there's a right-of-way for the city to build a road, and also some utility easements. So it's, it's called a federally patented easement that came down through the federal government.
I mean, this, this property owner, if he chooses to, they could put a, a chain-link fence in the centerline of the roadway, of the, of the, of the alignment.
Well, until we have this issue again, where here comes the city. And so my issue is, if we don't do something on behalf of the property owner to make it a little bit more permanent, five years down the road, two years down the road, here comes code compliance again. Been there, done that.
But that goes for all properties, that someone's put something in the easement.
I'm talking about the same issue, though.
The same exact issue, where they've put structures in the federally patented easement. And if you do that, and the city needs the road, yes, you have to move them, you have to take them away.
Joel, correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding that even if we were to leave this with no agreement in place, that if the city decided tomorrow that we were gonna build a road there, that we would go to that property owner and say that, "Hey, you need to take this structure down, and it's your expense to take it down."
Correct.
So, what are we arguing about here?
I, I think it's code compliance. And we don't have them here.
It's a matter of whether.
This isn't a code compliance issue at this point, though. Code compliance was here for other issues and discovered this. If there were no other issues on the property, my guess is this would never have come to council, and these, and these people wouldn't have approached us three different times. Leave it alone. If, if we want to build the road there, they're gonna have to take it down one way or another. The next owner's gonna have to take it down one way or another. Why are we talking about this for as long as we've talked about it?
Because I think, because they've requested an extinguishment. So that's the issue. So we have to decide, are we gonna give up that land? Is the city gonna give up that land or not?
But that's the point that I'm saying, is that they would have never requested that extinguishment if code compliance didn't visit their property in the first place and discovered that there was a building inside the easement.
Your Honor. I guess one of the questions that I would have, then, is, did these, did, did Development Services recommend that they come and have this extinguishment done? Or was this completely on the owner? Because that makes a difference in my mind, too. If Development Services recommended it and ran this person through the wringer and caused them the fees, then that makes a difference in my mind as well.
So, so the stance the city takes is that when, when we do get approached by applicants, we do mention that staff is not, will, will not, would not advise of this. However, they are still able to apply for a permit, I mean, an application, which is a non-refundable three hundred and fifty-dollar fee, because we cannot deny anybody to apply for an application. This is something that is also mentioned from, from code compliance or Development Services when they're sent down to the city, to, to Public Works.
So, Kelsey, and I'm sorry to put you through the wringer on this one, I, I really am, but I, I, that's the point that we're trying, or, I'm sorry, Raquel, I apologize. That, that's what we're trying to determine, is how the applicant got to Development Services in the first place. From what I understand, code compliance came out to the property for whatever reason, and in their inspection of the property, set, found the structure and saw it and said, "Hey, you might have a problem. Come to the city and find out." And from that point is where Vice Mayor Rizzi is saying, once that was determined, did Development Services Department say, "Well, it's gonna be three hundred and fifty dollars, and you need to go through this process," or did the applicant just one day out of the blue with no discussion from code compliance, no discussion from the city, show up at the city offices and say, "We want to do this"? Because that's gonna be a big determining factor.
I think there's been a lot of discussion of this.
I think the difference might be whether they were told they had the option to apply to extinguish, or were they told they needed to do that? There's a difference.
So it's always an option, however, staff, staff, and I say staff because I, I, it's not just Public Works, and it's not just Development Services, it is sta, it is city staff. We, we, we do mention that this may not, this, this may not be city consent. However, you do have a right, as a citizen, to apply for, for this three hundred and fifty non-refundable fee, to, to move forward with this, and it is council's, at, at the end resolution, they, they do have final permission to say yes or no.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Out of all the city entities, the only one that is not in favor of this extinguishment is Development Services.
Correct.
Your Honor, I move that Resolution Number Twenty Forty-four, Resolution of the Mayor and the City of Apache, Council of Apache Junction, Arizona, declaring portions of federally patented easements located on Eighteenth Avenue from Wagon Wheel Road to Goldfield Road no longer necessary for public use, as federal patented easement is hereby extinguished as present and future public right-of-ways be approved.
Second.
I have a roll call.
Councilmember Schroder.
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
No.
Councilmember Gremmell.
No.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
If the circumstances were different and there were a better possibility of a road coming through there, then I would have a disagreement. Yes, let's do this.
Councilmember Biggs.
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Five to two, motion passes, Your Honor.
Thanks, Raquel.
Thank you, Raquel.
Okay, new business. Yeah, I want, want to combine the next two presentation, the consideration of Resolution Number Twenty-One Oh Seven and Twenty-One Oh Eight, accepting a petition and waiver consent for the intention to form of the City of Apache Junction's streetlight improvement districts for Goldfield and Coyote Crossing. Emile.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Wilson, council members. My name is Emile Schmidt, I'm the city engineer, and I'm here this evening to present to you formally two resolutions for streetlight improvement districts for two subdivisions, new subdivisions in the city, one of which is currently starting construction and moving along pretty good, and another one that is still in planning phases and is working through the design process. Just a, kind of a vicinity map to show you where these are located. You'll see in the top center of the picture, Resolution Twenty-One dash zero eight, this is for the Coyote Crossing subdivision. It's at the southwest corner of TP Street and Idaho Road. And then in the southeast part of the image there, you'll see in yellow the Goldview subdivision, and that's the one that is currently under construction, and this is for Resolution Twenty-One dash zero seven. I'll go into a little bit of detail with each of these projects. So, Resolution Twenty-One dash zero seven is for a streetlight district for the Goldview subdivision. Here's a little aerial photograph, I've superimposed one of the images from the planning documents for this project, and, and you'll see some red dots and some yellow dots on there. I apologize, the yellow dots may be a little hard to make out. But what they represent is the streetlights that are installed as part of the development of this project. In total, there are fifty-nine public streetlights. All the streets within this subdivision are, will be in dedicated public right-of-way. The interior streets are with the streetlights that are highlighted in yellow, and on the perimeter, there are three roads that will be improved as part of the project, Star Road on the very west side, Twenty-Eighth Avenue on the south, and Goldfield Road on the east side. And between those three roads, there are seventeen streetlights that are highlighted in red. And from our discussion yesterday evening, explaining the difference between the interior streets and perimeter streets, only the interior streets with those lights will be included in the district. So out of the fifty-nine public streetlights, only forty-two of those would be included with this particular streetlight district. Next slide is a similar slide for the Coyote Run, or, sorry, Coyote Crossing subdivision, southwest corner of TP and Idaho. This is a twelve-lot subdivision, and the same thing, yellow streetlights and red streetlights. The yellow are, is for the interior street, which is also a public, and three perimeter streets on TP, or three streetlights on the perimeter streets, two on TP and one on Idaho Road. And, and again, the difference between the, why we do the interior streets versus the perimeter streets is that the interior streetlights pretty much benefit the residents of that subdivision, and the streetlights highlighted in red are benefiting the, the public at large, if you will, kind of a regional street lighting for, for that area, benefiting everybody. So, these are the two subdivisions, the two streetlight districts that I'm bringing for you this evening. And again, a quick little recap from, from last night. So we have several steps along this process for creating the district, and this is the first of three resolutions for each of the districts. This first resolution is for the intent to form the district, and what this does is establish the streetlight district with its current single ownership by each of the respective developers. And as I mentioned yesterday evening, I will be coming back in the future for two subsequent presentations, one for an installation resolution, and the other for the budget resolution. And when I come back for each of those, I'll have a little bit more detail on what all of those entails. But for now, the action requested is that we respectively request that Mayor Wilson and City Council, that you consider approval of Resolutions Twenty-One dash oh seven and Twenty-One dash oh eight, establishing these streetlight districts.
Any questions or comments from council? All right, seeing none. Since this is a public.
New business.
Yes, I have one that, Mr. Schroder, would you like to make a comment concerning these?
This is not a.
Mr. Mayor, that's. You can comment during the call of the public. Yeah.
Okay.
What about the applicant?
Okay.
You need a motion.
Okay, good.
Is the applicant, is?
We can vote?
Nope.
Okay.
We just need a motion.
All right. Do I have a motion on Twenty-One Oh Seven?
Your Honor, I move that Resolution Number Twenty-One Oh Seven, accepting the petition, waiver consent, and intent to form a streetlight improvement district, Number Twenty-Twenty-One dash Oh One, Goldfield be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Your Honor, real quick, can I ask for direct, for a question of Joel, real quick? Excuse me, for the interruption. On the agenda, it does specify that if somebody puts in writing and they are invited by the mayor, even though it's not a public hearing, that they might be able to speak. I just wanted some direction and clarification real quick on that, because it did, it did appear that somebody had submitted something to speak on it, so I apologize for the interruption, but.
Typically, for new business or old business?
Okay.
No, but usually, it's done for call of the public, and also public hearings.
Can we make sure and check our agenda, then, so that the public isn't confused by that, because it does look confusing on the agenda? I apologize, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, we had a second, we have a roll call.
Councilmember Biggs.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser.
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell.
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor, motion passes.
All right, do I have a motion for Twenty-One dash Oh Eight?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that Resolution Number Twenty-One dash Oh Eight, accepting the petition, waiver consent, and intent to form a streetlight improvement district, Number Twenty-Twenty-One dash Oh Two, Coyote Crossings be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs.
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser.
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor, motion passes.
Okay, presentation of consideration for Resolution Twenty-One Oh Nine, for continuing participation in the Arizona Metropolitan Trust Employee Benefits Program. Matt and Liz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. We have Liz Riley, our Human Resources Director, and she's gonna walk us through what this renewal is, and it comes up every three years, so she'll, she'll go from here.
Good evening, Mayor Wilson and City Council members. I'm Elizabeth Riley, Human Resources Director for the City of Apache Junction. It's a pleasure to come before you tonight to talk about the city's renewal membership in the Arizona Metropolitan Trust, otherwise known as ASMT. I'll just give you a very brief history for those of you who aren't familiar with ASMT. The city joined ASMT for the plan year 2012-13. We were one of four founding members. We formed the trust. The city has the option to renew its membership every three years, and that is why I'm before you tonight. Each entity can renew every three years. I am here seeking your approval of Resolution Twenty-One Nine, authorizing the City of Apache Junction to renew its ASMT membership. I'm not gonna bore you with a lot of numbers and statistics. I will, however, tell you that prior to joining ASMT, the city was facing double-digit increases to its medical insurance premiums. Since joining the trust nine years ago, the city's premiums have been relatively stable, and the services offered by ASMT have increased. Services currently include medical, dental, city-paid life insurance, vision insurance, employee assistance EAP program, and a robust wellness program supplemented by our own wellness team. I believe all of this was in the transmittal letter that you received. So tonight, I'm asking that you continue to allow the City of Apache Junction to be fiscally responsible with its selection of health, dental, and vision insurance, and EAP and wellness programs by renewing the city's membership in ASMT for another three years, which takes us through June thirtieth of 2024. I'm sure the employees of the city would be very grateful to you. Questions?
Do I have any questions?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Liz.
Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, you want to make any other statements?
No. Staff recommendation is to, to continue on. It's been a great trust to be a part of, so.
Do I have a motion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that Resolution Number 21 dash 09, to continue participating in the Arizona Metropolitan Trust Employee Benefits Program be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser.
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs.
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder.
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor, motion passes.
Thank you. Direction to staff regarding details on council retreat. Bryant.
Your Honor, thank you. Last night, we went over some of the details regarding time, place, location, process, regarding an upcoming strategic planning session or retreat. And tonight, we, at the staff level, seek your direction on, if you'd prefer Friday, the location, I think I already know, but if you would like to articulate those in a formal motion, then we can proceed. Last night, you talked about seeking a Friday first, Central Arizona College with a consultant, with topics of, to look at, being funneled to me, and then I could get those to the mayor and then start working through those. So that's really all we need at this point for this one.
All right. Any discussion from the council? All right. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move that direction be given to staff to formalize the council retreat details noting council's preference on particular matters.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do I have a roll call?
Councilmember Nesser.
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs.
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor, motion passes.
Thank you. The next regular scheduled work session is Monday, April 5th, and the next scheduled City Council meeting is Tuesday, April 6th. Do I have a motion to set an exec session meeting for the April 4th or 5th?
Actually, it's the 5th and 6th.
Pardon?
I think it's the 5th and 6th.
Yes.
5th and 6th?
5th and 6th.
Of April.
I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that an executive session at 6:00 PM for Monday, April 5th and Tuesday, April 6th be held at the City Council Conference Room located at 300 East Superstition Boulevard in Apache Junction.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder.
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Okay. Call of the public. I'd like to remind everyone that call of the public is a courtesy and not required by law. It is a time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Requests to speak forms must have been completed and handed to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues presented in a professional manner without personal attacks, and you are speaking to the council, not the audience. Underneath the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in discussion but may respond to criticism and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly or place this matter on future agenda for council discussion. There's a three-minute limit for each speaker. And I have one, and it's Mr. Schroder.
Good evening. George Schroder, 2444 West Virginia Street. AJ. Obviously, I'm a happy camper. The flavor of our city is changing with the disembarkment of Mr. Hazel. Got three more to go. Now, I was hoping to speak to this streetlight district. The more days that we get, it's going to be on the burden of those people. And I'm told that this can be a good thing. But I caution you, in the future, more and more and more of these might happen and be approved, but it's just a more disintegration of our neighborhoods and our city. And that's great for Mesa. They want that. Two, it is the city council's job to fight for my neighborhood, to fight for me, and getting rid of the crap that our city has allowed on my street, 2525 West Virginia. It's terrible. I'm told there's a little bit of slave labor waiver that the city gave to the new owner, Mr. Schutz. I'm quite sure he's a friend of somebody here to allow the movement and rehabilitation of this mobile home. It violates federal and state insurance laws, and they already put a red tag on it. It should be disembarked. Now, the property is under contract, should be negated, should be talked about, should be directed to staff. Haven't heard one word about that. Why is it still moving forward? Why is it existing in my neighborhood? It's crap and it needs to be gone. Everybody knows it. It's been a problem for years. Now. It is just wrong that the city doesn't want to do anything about this problem. You, you, you're it. You're my last line of defense. You're supposed to be helping me. Supposed to be helping my neighborhood, my streets, which, you know, we got all this direction to staff. In 36 years, I've never seen one direction to staff to look at my street and get it done. Now I got to take a permit out to put my own street curb because the city refuses to do anything, not one thing, to my street in 40 years. This is wrong. And I'm telling you, I'm good for it. It's, I'm going to make it happen. Or there's some people that won't now work for the city anymore. I'll make sure of it. And if there's another judge like Mr. Hazel that is sworn in, I can't begin to tell you how fast I will be at court proposing.
That's enough for personal attacks.
It's not a personal attack.
Yes, it is.
No. How, how do you figure?
Okay. We're done.
Yeah. He's out.
That's right. All right. Council, have any requests of staff follow up on?
Bryant.
Yes, sir.
Would you, would you please check on the red tag house to make sure that code compliance and Development Services know of any work going on, as it shouldn't be?
Right. We will.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, I will adjourn the meeting.